And I'm calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, March 9, 2020. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Resak?
Here.
Mr. Carubas?
We do have a quorum, and Ms. Donahue, you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple Board salutes, and I will begin with Ms. Demming.
Fisher Middle School teachers receive grant. The Board salutes Fisher Middle School teachers Kathleen Sorara, Bridget Kepler, Patrick Rowley, and Carl Tornberg on receiving a $750 grant from the Illinois Education Association Foundation. The grant was awarded to the teachers for their service project aimed at promoting lifelong readers while increasing family and community engagement as part of the foundation's Schools and Community Outreach by Educators Program. Congratulations to these fine educators.
Thank you, and Ms. Peel?
Okay, the Board salutes Matia Valley Junior Ursula Sturgeon, who was recently named a national awards recipient in the Kennedy Center's 2020 VSA Playwright Discovery Program. As an award recipient, Ursula will travel to Washington, DC in conjunction with this year's Kennedy Center American College Theater Festival, where she will have time to further develop her script in collaboration with professional directors, actors, and playwrights. Additionally, this honor includes a $1,000 cash award. Congratulations, Ursula.
Thank you. We now move to our student representative report. Today it's from Niqua Valley High School, and we have Shivant Gupta. Nice to have you back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shivant Gupta, and I am Niqua School Board Representative. Today I'll be giving you your Niqua update. This week, we are renewing school spirit with Recharge Week. Students and faculty participate in Spirit Days on every weekday of this week. Today was Crazy Socks Day, and tomorrow will be Wear a Collar Shirt Day. Thank you to Student Council for making this possible. We also had a parent tree conferences on February 27th and Teacher Institute Day on the 28th. Congratulations to Connor Boyle for winning a state championship in bull swim and dive. Also, congratulations to Honors Central Kumar for being a state champion at speech. Niqua is also hosting a Billy Elton Benefit Concert this Friday, March 13th, at 7:30 PM. The purpose of this event is to benefit funds created in memory of some fondly remembered Niqua Valley teachers. We hope to see you there. Niqua will also be hosting a college information night on March 18th to prepare students to search for colleges they may be interested in and to prepare them for the application process. On the 25th of March, high-shooting students in District 204 will be inducted at the Indian Prairie Scholars' Induction Ceremony. We are also welcoming author Jose Alavarez, the author of Citizen Illegal, on March 24th. We will also be hosting our Writers Week on the week of March 23rd, where students from all over the school create a piece to share with their peers on the Niqua stage. Athletes from Niqua Valley will also be signing to play their support for colleges during College Signing Day on April 8th. We can't wait to see where our Wildcats go. We will be honoring many students at the Niqua Honors Event on April 8th. Students will also be taking the state-mandated SAT on April 14th and April 15th. Niqua Theater is also hosting the annual Spring Musical on April 23rd to April 25th. This year, they'll be performing The Wizard of Oz. We can't wait to see what they have in store for us. That's it for today. Thank you all for listening, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. There is no one signed up for public comments, so we will move on to the Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report. As you can see, there's no superintendent today. She is out.
Can you make one of them substitute for her?
No one looks like excited to come over. And so, as a result, we're going to move to the consent agenda items. And so, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items D through F as presented.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through F as presented.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. This could be the quickest Board meeting in the history of man, but we do have a great presentation, a student services update. And so, Dr. Sepio, please join us.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a student service update this evening. I will not make this too long, but be thorough enough. This relates to Board Policy 6120, which is the education of children with disabilities. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to outline the federal mandates that govern the provision of special education, update the Board on the range of services and programming offered to the students in District 204, and then identify the progress made by the Student Services Department. So, special education is full of acronyms, and this is just an example of some of the acronyms that our staff need to be aware of and have intimate knowledge of in order to serve our students. The first three are probably the most important. Idea is our federal law governing special education, and within that law is both the ideas of offering students a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, and we'll discuss that in a bit. The next acronym, FERPA, is our Confidentiality Act, and that's a federal mandate, followed by the competing state mandate under the Illinois Student School Records Act. So, those are laws that protect the privacy of students. Section 504 is a federal law that covers individuals with disabilities who may need accommodations and modifications for their disability, but they may not rise to the need of needing an IEP under IDEA. The Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Confidentiality Act comes into play more and more today as we see a rise in the need of mental health issues. We need to protect those mental health records and keep them confidential. So, we also are obliged to follow that law. The Americans with Disabilities Act is very similar to Section 504. It's pretty much the adult version of Section 504, and that covers our employees and our parents in the district. And then, the Code of Federal Regulations and the Illinois Administrative Code are federal and state guidance for how to implement IDEA. So, this is by no means an exhaustive list of what we're dealing with, with acronyms, but just some of the basic laws that we follow in special education. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, it was, the federal law was enacted in 1990. It's been reauthorized twice, but not lately. And what it affords our students is the right to a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So, when you think about complying with IDEA, the foundation is really FAP and LRE, those acronyms. We need to provide an education that is appropriate. Sometimes we discuss that at length with parents and with staff in trying to find just that right fit for students, and least restrictive meaning to the maximum extent appropriate with their non-disabled peers. So, the origin of the idea of a free, appropriate public education came in 1982 with the Rowley case. And Amy Rowley was a deaf student, and she was a lip reader. And her parents asked for a sign language interpreter at her annual review, and the district said no. They said that she was doing just fine. And they, the parents took that all the way up through the various levels and to the Supreme Court, where the Supreme Court also said Amy was doing just fine, and that the standard for education was merely some educational benefit. So, that bar was very low, and that remained in place for a very long time. Different states took that standard and kind of changed it to their liking. And we got additional guidance in 2017 with the Andrew F. case, where the Supreme Court said that FAP was really defined as a district's obligation to develop an IEP reasonably calculated for the child to make progress appropriate in light of the child's circumstances. So, for each student, that means something different. We look at their unique needs, we look at their progress, and the Supreme Court went on to say that the IEP must be appropriately ambitious. So, there must be goals and objectives. We take measurement on those on a quarterly and annual basis, and we're obligated to meet with the parents at least once a year to review that progress. Once every three years, we reevaluate the student to see if they still qualify for service and what level of service they need. And the last thing the Supreme Court said in that case is "The essential function of an IEP is to set out a plan for pursuing academic and functional advancement." So, not only do our teachers and related service staff and everybody really dealing with students work on academic progress, but they also work on functional advancement. So, anything from the ability of a child to zip, button, and tie, to maintain skills necessary for employment in the community or pursuing post-secondary education. The other main legal concept is the concept of least restrictive environment, and that means we look at every student's opportunity in education and want to make sure that, to the maximum extent appropriate, they're educated with students who are non-disabled, so that they can have appropriate social models, appropriate language models, and just be a part and included within the school community. Within District 204, we have a continuum of programming options. The first being specialized instruction, which we refer to as supported education. That's for students who may be getting their special education assistance within the classroom on a push-in model, or if they need more specific and intensive level, they could be pulled out for a period of time and then go back in. If a student needs more support than that, they may be serviced in a specialized instruction, which is self-contained. Those students are with their teacher for most of their instructional day. They do have contact with non-disabled peers, but everything is per the IEP. And that's the parent sitting down with the school team and determining when it's appropriate for that student to be included with their non-disabled peers. Many of those students require an alternative curriculum, so they're working parallel with their peers, but maybe not out of the same books. And it is outside of the general education environment. For students that need more support than that, they may go to a private day school. Those are outside of District 204. And then, we monitor their progress for possible reintegration to District 204. That could be on a partial schedule, or that could be on a full schedule, again, according to the individual needs of the child. And then, last would be residential. Some students' disability is so significant that they need to actually live at the school site. So, within our self-contained programming in District 204, a typical self-contained classroom has up to eight students. There is a teacher, there are three teacher assistants, there is a signed Board-certified behavior analyst that assists with behaviors and routines and structure, plus the related service providers. And we can, I'll give you an idea of some of those positions a little later. So, we have three different types of self-contained programming. RISE, which is Reaching Independence Through Structured Education. That's for students on the autism spectrum. Also, for learners who have social communication challenges. We have SEL. Those are for students who have issues with emotional regulation. And we have AIM, Achieving Independent Milestones. Those are designed for learners with cognitive challenges. Many of those students often have accompanying medical needs as well. We also have our Early Childhood Programming, which is Prairie Children's Preschool. We have two types of programming in the preschool. We have a blended model, where we have special education students included with their non-disabled peers, and we also have a self-contained model as well with classrooms of exclusively special education students. We have AM and PM sessions. So, we have a combination of tuition-based students, Title I, and special education students. Prairie Children's Preschool also does developmental screenings, and their achievement is the gold circle of quality in instruction. And in the three areas, learning, environment, and teaching, quality administrative standards, and training and education, they've received the highest recognition you can receive in that. We also have District 204 Transition Programming. This is for young adults who are finished with their high school experience. It's worth noting that there is new proposed legislation. It hasn't passed yet, but we're watching it closely, where a student who would achieve their 22nd birthday within the school year would be allowed to complete that school year. As the law stands currently, once a student reaches the age of 22, they leave, no matter what time of the school year that is. And that is celebrated at STEPS with a soar-out breakfast, and they then soar out into adulthood. But this would be a continuation throughout the school year. The related services we're able to offer students are social work and school psychology. Those meet the crisis needs that go on in the school. They meet the minutes in the IEP for counseling, social work, or psychology. And this is, these are the mental health professionals in the schools. Occupational and physical therapy address the fine motor and gross motor challenges of some of our students. Speech language is for those with not only speech articulation, but maybe pragmatic speech, how to have a conversation, how to understand language. Nursing services, I will get into in a second. Transportation, which we transport a lot of students, not only to our schools within the district, but also to out-of-district placements. And then, adult support. We don't put adults exclusively on a student to kind of hover over them. We will say within an IEP that the student needs adult support, and we make sure that there's a variety of adults that the student is able to interact with throughout their day. As far as special transportation, an average of 2,000 students are transported each day, 1.3 million miles driven at a cost of 7.4 million. We're anticipating that that cost to rise in the future for transportation. School Health Services has a variety of tasks that the school nurse does, not only with the students that come in who are ill, but also there are healthcare plans for students that may not be disabled but need a healthcare issue to be monitored, and the nurse would do that. At the very beginning of the year, they're very busy with record-keeping, looking at immunizations, and health monitoring. They're also monitoring chronic issues and medication management for some of our students, specifically in the AIM program, who have multiple medical needs. And then, we also consider them to be a mental health professional. As far as our student population, over the past three years, you can see that not great gains, not great increase or decrease either way. We are well below the state average, and I track that, we track that over three years. Unfortunately, the state average right now is 16% special education, which is increasingly high. The types of challenges that our students have include the 13 federal categories of disability, plus the Illinois disability of developmental delay. And then, we also service students with 504 plans. Again, those are students who may not meet the criteria for needing specialized instruction, but still need adult support to have a successful school experience. Our five most frequently seen learning challenges among the students are specific learning disability, autism, other health impaired, developmental delay, and speech language. Developmental delay is a category that ends at the age of nine, and after that, the IEP team needs to decide whether that student fits more neatly into another category or has caught up with their gen ed peers and can re-enter. As far as looking at the primary identification of students, the numbers for the past three years are indicated here. You can see that generally, other than developmental delay, our numbers are decreasing. There are several factors that could account for that. One would be a decrease in student population. Another could be good work going on by staff of providing response-to-intervention, a multi-tiered system of support for them, so that they're giving that support during the school day, within the gen ed setting, and they're not reaching special education. Again, developmental delay ends at nine. A lot of times, we are choosing an identification label well before that so that we can more closely tailor the services to the student's needs. As far as the growth we've been able to make, we have updated our procedural manuals in both special education and 504. We're also in the process of updating our workload plan. And a workload plan is a mechanism for special education staff to have voice when they feel that their workload is becoming overwhelming or unmanageable. And it's a chance for them to document with data where they see difficulties, and then, it's a process to bring it to administration in collaboration with union representation. And we're working through language on that plan so that it's updated. It was, it was present here in District 204, but it hasn't been updated in some time, so we're in the process there. As far as curriculum, we do have a PAYS lab that started last year in the STEPS program. So, that is a job opportunity that the students have, a special lab that they go into to explore different career paths and different tasks that would be involved in those careers. We've also rolled out a uniform reading curriculum in the elementary and middle schools. So, we had a reading committee meet for the better part of last year, and they chose two resources so that, from one school to the next, there would be uniformity, so that if somebody moved or somebody came in, and also going into middle school, that there was a continuity there. SPIRE is a resource used for phonology, and LLI, which is Level Literacy Intervention, is going to be used for reading fluency and comprehension. And then, currently, there's a reading committee in progress at the high school level to talk about, again, for students who need an alternate curriculum, they cannot access a gen ed curriculum because it's too difficult or too complex for them, but they need also to be working on grade-level standards. We're working on what resource we would have for them. As far as programming, the new, there's a new classroom at Wheatland. It is Room 102, and they have five students there that have all been brought back from outplacement. These are students that have social communication, somewhere on the autism spectrum. They were all in private day schools, and they were, they were able to be reintegrated back to District 204. Not only are they here at Wheatland, they're also, I think, four out of the five perhaps are also going to their home high school and taking classes there. So, that's, that's a great success. As far as bringing other students back from day school settings, last year, 19 students returned, not all on a full-time basis, but some on a part-time basis, but we still consider that to be a success. And then, so far this year, 10 students have come back either on a full-time or part-time basis. The STEPS COD enrollment has also increased. That's a success, from 15 to 22 students. So, students may come to the STEPS program for part of their day and then go to COD for another part of their day. Prairie Children's Preschool this year added another site at Graham, and that's hopefully to have more articulation with the general education students at Graham. And then, this year, we've changed the programming for STEPS for ESY, which is Extended School Year. This year, the STEPS Young Adults will be staying at Niqua Freshman Center. Instead of going back to the high school and being with high school peers, they're going to stay with the young adults. And then, the students who are graduating seniors and moving up to STEPS will be going to the STEPS ESY so that they can start to experience their peer group and the building and some of the staff. As far as services, we've increased the district support team with Board-certified behavior analysts and embedded them in the elementary self-contained programs. These BCBA's, as they're known, are also available for our middle school and high schools, as well as STEPS and Prairie Children's Preschool, but they're very much assigned to the self-contained rooms. And the reason for that is that these are students that often have significant behaviors, and if we are to have them stay within District 204, getting their behavior regulated is the first step in that process.
Sorry, could you just explain what those are a little bit better? Because I'm not quite sure I'm understanding you.
Sure. A Board-certified Behavior Analyst, they all have their background in teaching. So, they were teachers at one point. They went on and got their masters in Applied Behavior Analysis, and they just look at behavior a bit differently.
But you're saying they are now part of your district support team? Is that what you're saying?
They are.
Okay.
Yes.
And their job is to do what, the team?
Their job is to support the teachers in setting up structures and schedules and behavior modification strategies so that the students can be successful. Because in our self-contained programs, those are some of the most challenged students with learning and behavior.
Okay.
So, that's an increased support to the teachers and the students, of course. But they work with the teachers quite closely in data collection and management, and then, report out on different strategies. So, we have two dedicated BCBA's that move amongst the RISE classrooms for students on the autism spectrum. We have one dedicated BCBA for our AIM classroom, and we have a part-time, three-day-a-week BCBA for our SEL classroom at Springbrook. We also added last year RAP services for families that need home support. So, what would happen is occasionally, we would have an IEP meeting where the parent would be needing some guidance on developing those same structures at home as we have in school. And so, and just needing help in general. And we would send out and have very successfully a licensed clinical social worker to consult with the family. It's not providing counseling to them, but it's providing strategies so that they can manage when they have a child with significant challenges. And that's been successful. We've increased the STEPS job sites from 27 to 39, so our STEPS Young Adults are out in the community all the time. And then, we have a service called Referral GPS. And what this is, is an online service that our social workers and psychologists have access to. And it was developed by a gentleman that works at Linden Oaks. And what he did was to provide a database of providers for mental health services within the area and beyond, but mostly within the area. And so, if a parent went to a social worker and said, "I'm really having a need for some outside counseling. Would you recommend somebody? And I have this type of insurance, and my child is of this age, and I would really like to not leave my home more than, you know, five miles." They put in all of those conditions, and it pops up names of providers. And those providers are then, that list is given to the parents, and the parents can go and choose whom they're comfortable with. This is not a district recommendation for providing that service, but it is a resource to parents.
So, on the flip side of that, that's wonderful for parents. As far as from the staff side of things, if staff, support staff or special ed staff has a grievance or needs help or needs district advisement, is there something in place for them as well, from a staff standpoint?
If they need counseling- If they need counseling?
Well, no, I'm thinking more of a workload, caseload issue, or, you know, something happens with one of the students, I mean, there's a grievance, you know, that, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's something in place for the staff as well.
This-
Maybe that's more of a Doug question, but, you know, I just thought I'd ask since we were talking.
So Referral GPS is more of a counseling, mental health service program. If the staff needed, if they felt that they were stressed or overwhelmed or getting to that point, they would fill out the workload paperwork, and it would go through the channels of administrative support. If they felt like it was beyond that, then they would have access to EAP.
Okay.
And then DMG scheduling is something that we've done for the past several years, but that is a service that helps our administration to be more efficient with scheduling, especially with the related service providers, so that they can coordinate, so that we're not pulling students out for one service after another service after another service, and then their academic experience is pretty disjointed. So DMG scheduling has been critical in helping with efficiency of scheduling. The next thing I'd like to highlight is The Portrait of a STEPS Graduate. The Portrait of a Graduate was such a success and really a guiding force that the STEPS program looked at that very carefully and wanted to mirror that process only with a STEPS graduate. They started with the Portrait of a Graduate emblem that's used throughout District 204, and they believed, the stakeholders believed, that there were additional competencies that perhaps a young adult with a disability would also need, in addition to the things that had been done. And so what they came up with was, you can see the same competencies that were originally decided upon, but with some additions and a little bit of substitution. So you can see in the middle, there's the STEPS pathways. They have three pathways, college, career, and independent living. That doesn't mean a young adult is pigeonholed into any one of those. They can be in multiple, but it really helps to focus on classes, coursework, COD, you know, where is the student going? What is the end game here? You can see that the substitution in the banner in the middle is, in the original emblem said knowledge. This one says involvement. For a young adult with a disability, the stakeholders felt that their involvement in the community, their involvement with different organizations was probably the most important for them. And then they added in the maroon additional competencies in the area of personal responsibility and wellness. That could be anywhere from healthy eating to hygiene, to just making good decisions about yourself, to teamwork and collaboration, saying that the young adults with disabilities are, they need to be team members, because often their independence is, their ability at independence is challenged. And then technology and literacy. So we had approximately twenty-five stakeholders that went through the process. Kathy Pease and Brian Jovanini assisted us with mirroring the same process. It was a little quicker because they'd already gone through it, so they led us through that. There were twenty-five members, and I do think I have stakeholders here today. If you were part of The Portrait of a Graduate for STEPS, would you stand? Okay, thank you. And thank you for your participation. So the next steps for the Student Service Department is to continue to support our inclusive practices so that we can deliver a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, continue to build on the curricular resources for students who need alternate resources, and then build on our supportive services to maintain students in District 204 programming. And I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, so admittedly, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to review this until this weekend. And I've got about twelve different questions for you, but I will narrow it down to three. I will get the rest of you, and maybe I even come in and meet with you, you know, personally. But I guess, you know, the first thing is, you know, I was kind of, when I saw the topic, Student Services Updates, I was kind of hoping I was gonna get something as far as, you know, improvements or changes or goals or challenges. And this was kind of more of a Student Services 101, you know? I mean, there was not a lot of that in there. And I speak for that as having two kids with IEPs and having had services all the way back to ninety-five, when my first daughter was three years old. So I was looking for a little bit more and maybe more in-depth at the individual levels as far as elementary school, middle school, high school, and the STEPS level. And maybe that's a future presentation where we could actually have those level people discuss what's taking place in Student Services, because it's a major, I mean, should be a major focus of all of ours, but it definitely is for me. So my first question is, as far as placements for our special education kids, do we have ways to assess and define ways in which we measure where we're placing those kids? Whether it's integrated or self-contained? And I guess is that an objective thing that we look at, or is it subjective? I mean, how are we making those determinations? You know, I guess that's part of my question, because what that leads to is, you know, what I'm wondering is, as those kids are placed, if we carefully look at the support services that are being put in place? And I guess I'd like to see some of those numbers as far as, you know, and this is maybe something I can sit down with you and look at, because I'd like to look at our buildings based on the number of IEP students we have there and how those resources are being determined and who's making those decisions. But going back to my original question, how are those placements are made? Is it kind of an objective thing or subjective, or how is that determined?
The IEP team makes that determination for every student individually.
For the building?
No, for the student.
Okay.
If I'm understanding your question correctly.
Well, I'm just saying for where they're placed for that year.
Oh, the self-contained programs?
Any special ed student, how are they determined where they'll be placed?
So the first place we'd like to place a student is within their home school. So every effort is made to continue the student's education within their home school. If they require self-contained programming, there's the chance that they would have to move schools. It just depends on where that, so as an example, if you are in, if you need the support of an SEL program for emotional regulation, you would be going at the elementary level to Springbrook.
Okay.
They have three classrooms there, and that would be the only location. If you're a student with a cognitive disability and accompanying medical needs, you would be going at the elementary level to either Owen or Biltah.
Okay.
If you were a student within a RISE program, you might be going to Welsh or Young or Kendall or Clough.
Okay.
Or Patterson. So after they're in that school, we would like to keep them in that school and not have them move around every year, so-
Sure.
-that's what we do.
So if they're integrated within the general ed, who makes the determination if the regular certified teachers need additional support staff? Is that made at a principal level, or?
No, that's made at the IEP team level. So we decide as an IEP team with the parent in participation whether that student needs the support of a push-in service, or whether their intensive needs require pull-out, or whether they go into a self-contained program at all. But that level of support is not made categorically, it's made on an individual basis.
Is that IEP team also tracking minutes?
Yes. They write down exactly how many minutes that teacher goes in or out, how many minutes of speech they need, how many minutes of occupational therapy or physical therapy or social work, everything down to the minute.
Okay. On a totally related but unrelated issue, I was a little surprised on Slide twenty and twenty-one, and maybe this just isn't a measurable thing that we look at, but I was surprised that emotional disturbance and behavioral disorder students weren't mentioned, because it's my understanding that a lot of staff's time is spent on those students. You know, and I guess I'm trying to balance is if certified staff or support staff is supposed to be focusing on kids that have IEPs or 504s, but they're dealing with a lot of the ED/BD kids, you know, how much time is that really taken away from, you know, the IEP kids? So maybe that's a conversation that I can have with you, because, you know, it's my concern between tracking those IEP minutes and if we have, if we can say that our most behavioral, top twenty behavioral kids is taking up eighty percent of our time, you know, my concern is, are we doing disservices other where, other places? Because, you know, those ED/BD kids, if they're having issues in class, the certified staff needs to focus on those kids. So, you know, I mean, this is maybe a discussion that I can have, because I've got a lot of more in-depth questions that I'd like to learn about.
Yes. So there's only ED. The regulations don't allow us to call students behavior-disordered anymore, so there's only ED students. And they're, the reason that we put the BCBA at the elementary level and at Middleland High School level with them is so that they can support that. They don't distract or detract from the education that the other students are getting. We put additional supports in there. It is true that, and I was a little surprised because mental health is, you know, is a hot topic right now, and it's on the rise, but the ED population in this district is not one of the top five. So that's probably, the number isn't anyway, that goes to the, that goes to the fact that you can have-
I'm shocked, because it seems like I see more of that going on in the schools than I do with IEP kids, to be perfectly honest with you. And I apologize, because you caught me off, coming off of hearing a speech from Dr. Bolton, who was a principal at North Shore Academy, who's written a book on some wonderful behavioral interventions for special needs kids. So, you know, I kind of came off of that speech last week, so that's why I ask a lot of these questions, too. But I'll stop for now, and, you know, I can come in and talk.
Just so that you know, this data came from the state board. This is our December one child count. It's taken every year. So these are the accurate numbers of students that have IEPs. Now, some students have secondary disability, so you could have a student with a specific learning disability as well as ED. That wouldn't be included in these numbers.
Okay. All right.
Other questions? Ms. Peel?
Okay, so I kind of agree with what Mark was saying. It would be good to have some information about how you measure success. So, you know, I'm looking at a lot of really good data and interesting data, but how do we look at this and say we're doing a good job? Like, how many, and I don't know what that would mean, because I do understand everyone's unique and everyone has different goals, but is there something that we can see that shows us, or something that we need to discuss to have a better indicator of, are we successful? And I say that with, I've had the pleasure of having my dogs, who are our therapy dogs, work both with the STEPS group and with, every week at Springbrook with SEL kids. And I am truly grateful to the staff and the expertise that they are applying to these kids and the love. And, you know, I think that's a great attribute and a great thing to see in our district. So I want to make sure we're doing everything that we can to be successful here, because these kids need our support. How many kids are in the private day and residential in our district?
We have one residential, and we have approximately one hundred and fifteen in private day.
Okay. And I also noticed, so your comment about the kids that are in different categories, if you will, at the schools. And so are we successful keeping those kids at a school, or it's really dependent on the enrollment the next year or whatever? Because I do think it's important for them to be able to stay at a school and kind of bond with that, you know, identity of that school. And, you know, I know the students that I work with at Springbrook seem to come from all different places, so it's like, I'd like to make sure that they have some stability with being at Springbrook for, you know, several years.
Right. The model has been, and just going back to your first question, I'd be happy to show you the inclusion data that we have and to see the percentage of students that are out that are included, eighty percent or more of their day, and there are certain tiers to that that the state board looks at. We certainly could look at that. I don't know, that would be one measure of success, but I also don't want to, for there to be any misunderstanding that we should just push all the students out just to make our number look big, and it's not the right thing to do with kids.
Right.
So I think that it's really hard when you're looking at every individual student to think about how holistically we're going to define success. I think success in special education is best looked at by the amount of support that you give, staff and students, so that they stay within the district. That's been one of our measures of success. The number of students that have been, that have done well in alternative day and that we've been able to support to come back is one measure of success. Opportunities that they have, like at COD or different jobs, as the STEPS Young Adults have, is another measure of success. But I think percentages can be deceiving in special education. I think that you can get stuck on percentages and then you make the wrong decisions for kids. So I would just be a little wary of that. I'd like to look at opportunities and growth in programming. I think when we have one resource that's used consistently with all of our schools, that students will, if they move or if they come in, they all know, we all have a resource together. I think that's one measure of success. We could certainly track their reading, and we plan to do that. But it's difficult in special education to look at that.
Yeah, I recognize that, and that's why I prefaced my comment about that, because I realize I don't want to push people, you know, into a direction that really doesn't make sense, just to try and get some better number or whatever.
The other model that, when you're talking about Springbrook, when students are in self-contained programming and they get out for, let's say, one or two classes, and then it turns into three or four, and then it turns into most of their day, they start to have a conversation about going back to their home building, because those are their neighborhood peers, those are the students that they're going to go to high school with. And so we do look, it would be nice, I agree with you, if you're at Springbrook, but when you're doing well and when you're out for most of the classes, we do talk about going back to your home, your home and neighborhood school. Thank you.
Other questions?
And a couple.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that kind of intrigues me, and because I'm working, was the GPS and then the workload. And I'm sitting here going, do those, help the staff be able to take a look, does the GPS putting their schedules together kind of help them say, you know what, there's no way for me to do all this in a day? Or is it simply very separate? I was just wondering about that.
The DMG scheduling?
DMG, yeah.
Okay. So the DMG scheduling, yes. The pilot schools that used it said that they saw a lot of efficiencies, because the related service people were actually talking to each other and coordinating, so that they're not all pulling the student, you know, on the same day or, you know, throughout, and always, let's say, the student is always missing math.
Right.
And they were able to talk about that. So they did that within the scheduling, and they did really see a big difference.
Okay. And so the workload thing, how often are staff taking advantage of that program, or those papers, whatever, that they're having to fill out for that?
So the last time that the, well, the requirement for the workload plan stemmed back to two thousand eight or nine. That was when the state mandated that that be in effect. And it was in effect, I think that it was several assistants or superintendents ago that I saw names in my position. So I think it's been in effect in theory. When someone feels overwhelmed, they go to their student service coordinator or their department chair or their principal. they go to their student service coordinator, or their department chair, or their principal, and they work through it. This is just a more formalized process, so that we can gather some data about that person's schedule. Maybe they have difficulty in scheduling, or maybe their caseload jumped up and we didn't catch it, or... And we have worked through several situations this year, where it's come to a nice resolution.
So when they're looking at their caseloads, it... For like, social workers, we don't work just with the IEP kids and special ed. We work with the general ed, too. So is that the kind of thing that they're looking at?
Yes. So they might say, I had 30 crises this month alone, in addition to my workload, in addition to the IEPs, in addition to the crisis of the gen ed students, not just special ed.
Right. Okay. That's very good. And then the adult support that you mentioned, you said we don't assign, like, I'm picturing a specific aid for some students who really do need a lot of one-on-one support...
Correct.
...in school. So, but, you know, there's a lot of relationship building there sometimes, I see. So could you just explain that a little bit more for me?
I think that sometimes when you assign just one person, that person can maybe over-help and not foster as much independence as the student should be given credit for, or be given the opportunity for. And so by having, and I do realize that we... For students who have trouble with transitions, we limit those relationships, so that they're not with somebody, you know, too many people throughout the day. But we would rather see that adult support with different people, because as you exit the school system, you have to deal with a lot of people. So we want to try to foster that skill as early as possible.
Okay. Good. The last... I just want to say the portrait of the graduate for special ed. I love that. What a great approach and great concepts in there. That's really awesome. So congratulations on that.
Susan?
Thank you. I... When you mentioned PCP site for Graham now, Slide 23, is that across all levels, Title I, special ed, and tuition-based, or...
Yes, they have both blended and self-contained in that site.
Okay. And then, as we were talking, and again, you know, definitely appreciate everything that is done for the students who have special, you know, special needs and require special services. And as we look at how we define success, maybe just not so much percentages. I don't know possibly if there's a way for us to look at as students progress, say, from the ability to move back into their home schools, they leave one level to the next, maybe looking at how many are able to stay in that, you know, homeschool setting. Maybe some of that type of information might be versus percentages, or so that we can see are there other things that maybe we need to do, or where we're doing really, really well, if we can take advantage of some of those types of things. So just a potential idea, potential suggestion. And then I wanted to know, on Slide 13, if you could just give... Just so that some people may not know, what was... I'm trying to see, where was the... Okay, nope, we're good. I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Crower?
I wanted to ask you about the referral GPS. Is that an app that is district-wide, that even parents, if they're looking for a mental health care provider, can go into and look up?
No, at this point, it's a staff.
Okay.
They have it on their computer, but they can give that whole list. They can say to the parent, if, you know, how many people do you want, you know? Sometimes if the parents are given the experience was, and it was a question that was asked just recently, if the parents had access to all of it, it tends to be overwhelming. You want to put those filters in and find out what the parent is actually looking for, and then give them, you know, as many as they would like. But it's not something that we've opened up to parents at this point.
So if you are not a special education child, but you go to your social worker in your school, can they look it up?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to say is, I think a lot of us had a chance to see the PACE lab, and it was really fascinating, and it was a great way to see how... I know one of the issues that came up were that the students in STEPS program, when they graduated, they weren't continuing in the same job because they weren't as effective, which was one of the reasons the PACE lab was started. And the kids were... the students retired and everything. Has there been any feedback from employers for students that are in the PACE lab, and have they seen a change in their progress?
That I don't know. I haven't followed up with STEPS to see if the skills that they're learning in PACE lab... I know that they're benefiting them within their employment site, but I don't know if employers have noticed that. I can follow back up, though.
And I also wanted to comment about this. I think this is a great brochure, how you segregated it for parents, to make it easier for them to understand what the STEPS program is, and they can choose a path. And especially with the COD, how you have a person at COD to help the student there. I think that's a great thing that you have done there, so...
Well, that credit goes to Kim Maloney and to Janet for putting that together for us.
No, it's a great...[1074.26][1074.26](applause)
I have one more question.
Sure.
So on the Prairie Children Preschool, do we have enough capacity for all the special ed students that want to get in there?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. There's no waitlist or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay.
Ms. Peel?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else?
(inaudible).
I have a few comments and questions. Thank you for the presentation. As you can tell, this is an accountability-driven board and data-driven board. I'm going to focus on one of the numbers that I think is a real highlight, which is on Slide 18, which is the incidence of special education students in the district. Clearly, the state of Illinois, and perhaps the world, is experiencing greater mental health issues. And those increases could be a reflection with those higher incidences. I think that our response to intervention program may be working appropriately to be sure that students that are to be identified in a very specific way are being identified in that way, and that we try to provide support to our students in the regular education venue. Do you have any comments on that?
I would mirror that thought. I think that there's a rise in mental health. That doesn't mean that there's a rise in disability. I think it would be unfair of a student who is undergoing an acute or even a chronic mental health challenge to be... We have to think really carefully before we label them as having a disability. And so I think the staff are doing a really good job. When students come in with an issue, we give them the support, but we don't rush to call it a disability that then follows them for a very long time.
On Slide 21 intrigues me. I was... I'm so old. I was in special ed before 94-142, which was the first special education law in, like, the 70s. So I'm an old man. And I look at these numbers, and back in the day, there seems to be a higher incidence of students, like, with autism and other health impaired. Back in the day, primarily anyone that was in special education were the specific learning disability students.
Yes.
And it was significant difference between what, at that time, they called high-incidence and low-incidence students, for lack of a better term, and they could have used a better term. When I came to the district in the 90s, the district was known for the provision of special education services, not only to its high-incidence learning disabled kids, but for its philosophy of inclusion and working with kids with low incidence, and not in excellent, superb fashion. And I wonder, historically, if we would compare the percentages of students with these disabilities with other school districts, would these mirror what other school districts have in their schools? Or do we... Is our school district serving students... more students in a particular category or area because of the excellence of what we've done? So do you have any comment on that?
Yes.
Do we see higher incidence?
I believe we do. I believe we do, for the same reason as students without disabilities whose parents move into this district to access the robust programming that's here. I believe that parents and parents have shared that they come into the district for the programming, especially if they have a student with autism. That's been shared. I think that we're looking at the specific learning disability and trying to balance that high number with the fact that, just because you're... This is a high-performing district, it's fast-paced, and if students are having a little challenge keeping up, we want to make sure we support them. But we want to also make sure that we don't put that label on them of a specific learning disability, just because there's a lot of rigor here. That doesn't mean it's a disability. It means they need additional support, and that's where your RTI measures come in. So I do think people move to the district, they've... Parents have shared that in IEP meetings for the special ed programming. So if I did a comparison, it wouldn't surprise me to see that our numbers would be higher.
Yeah. Sometime down the road, I'd be interested in seeing those comparisons, just to see. Point for that is this, and people have kind of done this already, you know, the staff does an excellent job.
Yes, they do.
We probably serve students with higher needs than most school districts. I think why the board is so accountability-based is because we feel that responsibility to serve these kids, because we have a mission statement that I think we embrace, and that is to serve all our kids in an excellent fashion. I think we have to understand, and everybody else has to understand, that sometimes that might mean extra services, because we may look differently. We have to be very careful. We have to be very prudent, very careful, financially responsible, but to make sure that we're serving our kids and supporting our staff and our parents in the way that we're supposed to, you know, as dictated by law, as you mentioned earlier. So for me, that's interesting information. I would continue to, like, engage in that dialogue. So as a board member, who clearly wasn't specialized, but is so far out of it now, I don't know how effective I am, and I want to be effective, to make sure that, and we all do, to serve the needs of these kids, as we serve the needs of every student in our district. So for me, that would be, I'm interested in having increasing dialogue with you, and how we can best serve our kids.
Sure. I can say that among all the districts that... of like size in the area, and even outside of the area, the fact that we have board certi... we have six board-certified behavior analysts is unheard of, that level of support. But if we're to keep students in the district and continue to afford them some behavioral support, so they can stay here, that was the additional support that was built in.
So, anything else? Thanks so much. It's always a great conversation.
Thank you.
Oh, it's me. I did attend. We're moving on to Legislative Advocacy Update. I did attend the LEND Executive Committee, which is the Legislative Education Network of DuPage. At that meeting, I think it was last Friday, or February 28th, they provided us a listing of all the bills that people are looking at in the legislature that may apply to us. So there's some good information that is in your folders. The two that I would mention that have some implication for us, Dr. Sepio mentioned the first one, which is, I think board members asked some questions about what would happen if students were staying to age 22, and how can we best serve them. So we need to continue to monitor that. The other one that may make the lives of teachers and administrators a little bit easier is that if you receive an excellent or proficient rating, instead of every two years being evaluated, I think it moves now to three years. So those are the two things that I saw at this point that have implications for our teachers and for our parents, maybe not so much in terms of policy for us at this point. I'm going to move to a Board of Education update, and I'm going to ask that... Look out for emails from me. The board has a goal that says we're going to look at an equity statement. Susan put some things together. I've worked with Justin. He put some things together. I put some things together. I've talked... I talked to Jen Rowe today, and some of the equity leaders, just to get some feedback from them. And so at a future board meeting, maybe the next one, we're going to... We are going to begin to have a discussion about our equity statement. I'm going to share with you everything that we have collected in order to begin a discussion. So be on the lookout.[1772.53][1772.53](laughter) Anything else?
Thanks for the warning.
Thanks for the warning. Without Justin's...
Motion to adjourn. Reset. What are we doing?
Motion to adjourn. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.